Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the lovely meeting of the Lebanon County Council. It's good to see a crowd here and certainly very nice to see our young people being recognized for a multitude of different achievements. It's good to see our citizens here tonight who have questions or also have items on the agenda that was laid just to them. So, before we start the business, I'd like to invite Pastor Arnold King from Bethel Baptist Church to give the gun forward for our invocation, followed by our pleas of allegiance. And we thank you for being here.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for letting me do it tonight. Let's bow together. Our Father, which art in heaven, great and glorious God of eternity, God of grace and mercy and love. Thank you for this lovely day and thank you for the opportunity you have afforded us to meet together tonight. We thank you for our town, for our county, for our state and our nation. And I pray that you would lead in this meeting tonight as the mayor of these members of the council and these citizens have gathered, these young people and everything that will be done. I pray that you would lead it by your Holy Spirit to bring glory and honor to you, Lord, and also to benefit our town and to bless each other as we glorify you. I pray you would bring revival to our county, our town, our nation. I pray that our nation might turn back to you. Bless our leaders. Lord, bless our president tonight. And I pray that all of us will commit ourselves to follow you. And I pray, Lord, that we will love each other. And I pray that all that is done in these chambers tonight will glorify the Lord Jesus Christ, will bless all of us and strengthen us. And may we leave here tonight rejoicing because we know we've been in your presence. We're asking in Jesus' name. Amen.
Allegiance to your flag, of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You missed Virginia.
He may need to edit the agenda for the items not on here, which are several. He may need to add anything to the agenda. All those in favor of the agendas, make a motion, please, for a second. All in favor, say aye. Vows. Now, has anyone had a chance to review the minutes from our March regular council meeting? Any additions or anything that needs to be done?
I want to add the motion to approve the minutes for the April meeting, March meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes for the March meeting is our second.
I'll say it then, Mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in here, all in. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Vows, same side. County revotes, so accounts payable, Mr. Short, is this the only, is this the sheet for addition?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Geller, did you review these?
I have, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the March accounts payable with the additions of well, Mayor.
May I say?
Say.
Red second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vows, same side. Now, one of the pleasant parts of our meetings are recognizing our students, our community. We have actually been several state champions here with us tonight. And we'll take this opportunity to recognize those folks. Mr. Potts, would you come up?
Yeah.
Is Dylan here?
Yeah, he's here. Yeah, I was just coming.
So, this year's state wrestling tournament, we thank you guys and ladies who have competed this year. We thank the coach for your efforts in getting these young folks ready. Mr. Potts, while I'm here, play it every day. I'm sure you're glad to recognize, give a chance to recognize your students. And Mr. Ray, thanks for being here. So, is Ian Ray our state champion?
Sir.
I don't know what weight class he is. Let me take a look.
Just go ahead. I don't want to hear his name right now.
Oh, lordy. Let's see, let me see your weight class. Is it on here? Diane?
No.
157. That is pretty good. You're right. Congratulations. You'll stand right there.
One out three.
It worked, too. This is, I want to make sure I'm right. I know that's Isaac. Is it Obers?
It's Obera.
Obera. Okay. So, we needed a male there, correct?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
However, we'll get one and get a two. We can do that. Okay? You finished, my man, second place. Congratulations. Great. 115?
150.
150. Close, wasn't it? Are you, how many seniors here in this group?
Maybe.
So, you all, you got, you be bad next year. How's your team looking number wise next year? In there?
Yeah, we look all right. We have one or two coming up, too. We have a couple that will show up soon.
The weight class, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And third place, Braden. Congratulations. I don't want to forget our coach here. Coach, thank you for working with these young little men. Appreciate you. And you go, congratulations on Brad's successful season. You have any comments you'd like to make?
I'm definitely not one of the talkers of the coaches staff, but I would like to say how proud I am of all the kids here. The amount of work they put in the offseason, you can't become champion one, two, or three and not put in the work in the offseason. Like, you have to get beat up every day to be the best. They've done it. He just hasn't noticed.
Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm on those sort of.
What's your, showing me? You showing me my moon? Mr. Potts, any comments?
We're really proud of our kids. I think one of the things that, you know, Coach Smith always talks about, the physical part of it, but there's a big mental part to wrestling, too. Ian especially, I could ask him in the hallway about what he had coming up, and he would tell me about the kids and what, you know, if you beat this kid, this kid's going to be waiting on him, and he likes to do this. And, you know, to be able to keep track of the points and all those kind of things when you're in the middle of grappling and it's kind of chaotic, that's really impressive. I think we've got some really smart kids up here, too, and I'm proud of them. They represent us well in the classroom and on the wrestling mat. So, we're really proud of them.
Let's give them a real applause. Parents, I love it. Got grandparents here? Or all parents? There we go. I like grandparents especially. Okay. So, where's my photographer? And parents, if y'all want to take pictures, say aye. Oh, you need, uh, come in.
You get in? I have a face for radios.
Anything else? Y'all want to turn around? The council managers come down.
We'll get it. 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 Sarah, would you come and join us, too, please? In case I miss the name, get into the name.
I'll just make you a script.
All right. That was a great event, y'all, that y'all had Thursday last week. Students did great.
Don't think Landon's here.
Man in lab.
Well, I think he had to work today.
Okay. Extemporaneous speaking, state champion.
And he's a two-time state champion, of course.
That'd be Landon Owens. She's here.
She is.
Running up in the pros, is that correct? Congratulations. State humorous interpretation runner-up. Congratulations. Is that Angie's?
It is.
How old was she when I retired?
Five.
Okay. Third place winner at the state original oratory. Congratulations. See her now. Okay. Third place, serious dramatic interpretation, Chloe Dillon. Ain't that have to expend on nothing, right, Coach? I mean, Mr. Potts? Katie Cole. Storytelling, third place. Congratulations. Kay Allen, bridgen, fourth place, serious duo. Is that correct?
That's her partner.
Okay. Miss Lily.
Yeah, that happened to do them.
Lily Gare, serious duo, fourth place winner. Brock Keen, impromptu speaking, fourth place winner. State impromptu speaking, fifth place. Congratulations. Well done.
She was on the team, but...
Okay. Let me play some, but she was what?
Humor.
Humors. Humors duo, Ally Beck.
And this is her duo partner.
Ethan Powell. Stella. And their fearless leader, four years in a row. Sarah, would you tell the folks here who these young people are up against when you go to the stadium? It's not just Southwestern, Jim, correct?
Yeah, it's not, no. And I will say that I think our biggest competition really is in the first two rounds. So, Region D is really, really tough. We represent this end of the state really well. And then Radford, who won the state champion the first couple of years before we moved back to Class Two, we have been going neck and neck with them for the past couple of years. So, it is a lot, it is really hard work. And it's gotten even more intense, I think, since we moved back up to Class Two. And, you know, every year, people say, oh, you're graduating people. But we have a lot of talent at Lebanon High School, and they put in a lot of work, and they're proud of their program. And so, I'm really proud of them. And Mr. Potts was talking about how intelligent and, you know, our athletes and our people are, and these kids are super smart, and it really kind of boils over into how much. And they have to think strategy, too. I mean, I know that's kind of crazy to think, but, you know, we win individually, but also we win as a team. So, we have to think, okay, who can we put in there to gain points, to get the state championship? So, we have to get the points at the end, so.
Who's the extemporaneous speaker, Sharon?
That's Landon. He's not here. We have a couple impromptu, though.
Is that where they go up and just hand you something to talk about?
And you do your writing and speak in seven minutes.
Okay. Congratulations. Mr. Potts?
First of all, I can't say enough about Ms. Stutes. And I think that at the most recent school board meeting, Mr. Sparks from Castlewood, he was talking about building relationships with students as coaches and the energy that is brought. When you bring the energy as a coach, the kids reciprocate it, and nobody brings more energy than Ms. Stutes. She's there till late hours of the evening. She works, you know, Saturdays, weekends. They, I mean, these kids really put a lot in, and you can see, Ally just came from tennis, Peplow came from soccer practice. They, like, they do other things. Emma's cheer, we, they do other, Mercedes volleyball, I mean, I can't name everybody. They all do other things. And then they come and they give their time to this. And so, it's really impressive what they do. And I really appreciate the sign that you guys have with Lebanon High School, state champions. I love that sign because when people come into town, they see that we have academics, we have athletic success, we show we have some individual athletic success as well. And this is a great place to be, and it's because of people like Ms. Stutes, because of these kids, they put a ton of time into it. We're just proud to be pioneers, guys. I'm not going to lie to you, but thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Two bucks.
We can spread them. Short in the front.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sure it's not.
That's more bad.
He has, he has come down over.
You're going to get on the bill. You're going to get a bill. Disgruntled. Actually, I'll be right. Aaron's good? Is that good? Michael, congratulations. Satias.
I'm going to get a beat there. I'm so excited right now. I could do something wrong. I hope she said, oh, my God, there's so many ideas in my head.
Well, there's two more.
Are you on the phone? Oh, yeah, I'm on the panel. I'm sure it's somewhere.
You have a board, man in chair?
Yes.
At this time, we're calling a joint meeting of the town of Lebanon Council and our planning commission. So, at this time, we return the meeting over to you.
I'm kind of my app was cut, Taylor. I went to the side. You just have to decide whether we want to use one or two. And we'll be able to get our counts set up. Counts for banks. Because you don't have a way to keep count, and I took the ten, so I'm going to do that one.
Okay. Before we start, we're just going to go over a little bit about how the procedure works, okay? So, we will have Ms. Nedley read the submitted application, and then the person who submitted the application can come up and talk about it and ask them questions if we have any. Anyone else in favor can come up and speak for the application. Those against the application also are welcome to come and speak. And then we see if we have any further discussion. We see if there's a motion to approve the application, if there's a second, or to deny the application. And then we vote. And what we do is just simply give a recommendation as the planning commission to the town, and the town council makes the final decision. Okay. So, and tonight, we have several. So, Diane, you can just go ahead and read the first one, and we'll get started.
I'm ready, Phil. You're ready?
No. We have already taken care of Mr. Fields and Mr. and Mrs. Reed, okay?
I don't think Chad Newberry's here, but an application submitted by Chad Newberry for resuming of the property on Highland Drive from a C1 commercial district to a R1 single-family district, adjacent property owners have been notified.
Okay. So, Mr. Newberry is not here. Okay. Is there, we go ahead, or should we wait?
You may just wait this past, without a meeting.
Okay. So, we'll just table Ms. Newberry's. All right. We'll go to the second. We'll go to the second.
An application submitted by Pam Hughes and Shane Hughes for conditional use permit for residential use in a C1 commercial district. The property is located to the right of Dean's Drive. Adjacent property owners have been notified.
Okay. So, is Pam or Shane Hughes here? Okay. Do you all want to come up and tell us about your application?
It's going to be a little bit of home, open.
Okay. And it is commercial, right, the zone? And what you're asking for is to be able to have residential use in a C1 zone? Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
What type of home are you? Probably modular.
Do you have any idea how the size of a home?
I have a question. The lot, we have circle here. Do you have this lot also?
I have a question. The, the lot, we have circle here. Do you have this lot also?
There's two lots.
So you wanna bring the driveway over here, or off of Price Street?
Any questions?
Okay.
Well, what about where it's level at the top? So I don't know if I would be wanting to go in both of those lots.
Okay, so where we have this king drawn, what you're saying is you're gonna use both lots and put it towards?
I would think so, yes.
The top?
Yes, at the top.
And you're only planning on building?
One, yes.
One modular, three modular home?
Yes, ma'am.
Probably a garage attached to it, I'll say.
And they're both on that patient.
We got a lot of applications. Any more questions? Um, you all can go. Okay, sit down. Is there anyone here that might be a neighbor or has any concern about this application? Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's Mr. Debbie.
Oh, okay. Well, there's still pretty much a lot to study. He's still picturing the lot stand up in front of you.
Don't, don't. No, we're all just together.
We have lots of questions. First of all, we were the only people that were notified about it. None of the people in the condos were notified about it.
We look, there's actually a piece of property that goes up in between there. So it's not considered adjacent. So whenever Ms. Diane does those adjacent properties, the county can click on the GIS map. So they're not technically that adjacent property owners.
So we're even, so is it the lots that run down beside our driveway? All the way down? That's owned by Debbie Bailey originally?
Yes, that's when they purchased all of them.
You purchased it from Debbie Bailey. So it's, um, it goes up the driveway right beside of them. It's still not considered adjacent.
Yeah, there's one of those.
Okay, so my understanding was from that square we gave us, that's down at the bottom. So they're gonna put the modular at the top of what Debbie Bailey?
I was just kinda showing you the lot area. I don't know where that, where their house is. It's, it's gonna be according to, they might be able to answer better than I can.
That's just their question. Is it gonna be at the top where our house is, or at the bottom?
A little bit further down, just where it's labeled. Not like right across from where your house is. Maybe down just a little bit. Where it's labeled, right there. Yeah.
Okay, another question. That, is James Drive, does it run from the bottom of the hill to the top of the hill?
That's a little bit, that's a little bit off topic, but as, we were told that James Drive just runs up to the townhouses.
I can check in the treaty.
Even though we're the only person that has the James Drive address. The townhouses are Main Street address. And I can't, I don't have my glasses on, so it won't count at all. But yeah, I, I have all this. I have all this, but like getting snowed in and all that stuff, we never get anybody all the way up James Drive. We get them up just a little bit, which is off topic. Um, the other thing we're concerned about is where, are they gonna go up our driveway, which is the right of way, I'll get that, and then go up midway? Or are they gonna come off the street below and go up their lots? That runs behind the Pioneer Restaurant. That was another question that we had. I also have a, I have nothing, I know offense against a modular home or, but I know that the subdivision that is behind us there ended up with double wides. And I don't have anything against that. But I think it does make our property all go, drop a lot. Brett Newberry has had a lot of issues. He's built a beautiful home there, and now his property values have dropped tremendously. So I would not want to see a double wide fit there. A nice modular home, I don't have a problem with. Or a home, home built, home, whatever. But I sure wouldn't want to see a double wide or modular. We've worked hard, I've been there 32 years. And I sure wouldn't wanna see my property lower, the value of it, lower cost of that. And like I said, I don't have any problem. I, I thought that they, the two lots were right down on the road, but again, they go up the driveway, which I knew that. I didn't realize that they, they had bought them up. I thought they had bought them over based on the, the picture I was given. But I think that's their concerns, and I think something we could visit at a later date is where James Drive begins and where James Drive ends. Um, and how we can deal with that, which is a whole nother thing. And I do know that James Drive is the right of way up to there. Yeah, I didn't know that.
And I guess they're saying they don't know how they're gonna go in.
I know. Exactly. Where it's gonna sit and how they're gonna get in and what type of house it's gonna be.
And as you said, we already know that Brett's property has gone down in value because of the modular homes that were actually double wides that were put in there. And they put up metal carports that are just...
Terrible ice stores right there. Drive through, look. And we don't, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, really.
She doesn't have a problem with anything else.
I'm easy to always... All right, thank you all.
Okay, is there someone else?
Bill Turdon, represent London Tech Development, the Ridge's.
Okay.
And we have our, the commercial lots adjacent to the property in question are still owned by London Tech Development. And eventually they'll be sold and or developed to your commercial, or perhaps even in the future, many residential, we don't know, if that gets approved. And to clarify something at this point of the question, there are no double wides in the Ridge's. The Homeowner Association regulations prohibit double wides. They're modulators. Unfortunately, modulators also include not quite the sloped roof, so they, they look like double wides.
They look like double wides.
But they're actually all frame, so they're on the lot. That's just a side point. And London Tech Development asked me to convey to the board, the vote boards, their thoughts on it. We have no basic objection to defending the conditional use permit for that's being proposed by the, by the U's, no problem at all. Uh, we do ask, and I say we, I'm representing London Tech Development, that certain restrictions be applied similar to what we have in the Ridge's. And namely, one is that, of course, the deed from the alley to the U's already says no mobile home shall be placed on the premises. So we certainly support that. Of course, it's in the deed, so it can't be changed anyway. And all driveways and property areas that are repaid. That's consistent with the Ridge's HOA document. Uh, the properties, we, we would like to have it included, the property shall be maintained in such a manner so as to prevent it becoming unsightly due to unattractive growth or the accumulation of rubbish and debris. That's one of the regulations in the Homeowner Association covenants and restrictions as well. And certainly, all these are really for the benefit, not just the Ridge's votes, but those in the condominiums and the Janks and others nearby. The other thing is, one of the HOA regs is no unregistered vehicles may be stored on the lot, just to prevent somebody bringing junk cars. We ask that that be one of the restrictions. And also, the breeding or keeping of any domesticated or wild animals being prohibited. And not, that doesn't apply to dogs, cats, other small domestic animals that are kept for household pets, and of a quiet and inoffensive nature, provided they are kept, not kept, bred, or maintained for any commercial purposes. So again, that's a restriction that's in the Ridge's, so we ask that be applied here as well. If, if those restrictions are included, the London Tech Development has no objection to the, the CUP application.
So this is, this is actually some commercial, it's not part of the Ridge's, but you are asking that these same restrictions, if we were to approve it, be applied as if they were in your Ridge's?
Yeah, they're such a, do you have that panel? Yeah, there, there are actually several lots of the Ridge's, actually, I highlighted in yellow the two lots in question here. And several of the lots will be right up against, will be adjoining, uh, the two, those two lots, as well as the other three commercial lots next to it. So we think that whatever happens here has an impact, not only on the neighbors and the condominiums and the Janks, but also those in the Ridge's. So they are joining, and we think it affects the value of all of them.
I understand.
I think that, Bill and I spoke earlier, I think most of this is covered by designing organs anyway, the junk cars and debris and nuisance properties. I think you've got offices in place that prohibit it anyway. So I don't know if necessarily, it needs to be both, the use permit, should you both recommend? And I think there's other, there's offices in place that cover their concerns already.
All right, does anyone else have any questions?
And as, as to the, the breeding of domestic animals, if you're breeding animals, that's a commercial use. So if you grant, if you change the use of the property residential, you'd be prohibited from non-conductive commercial activities anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against this submitted application? Is, do I have a motion?
Uh, just one question. Have you all picked out a designer for a home or anything?
We have, and it's a very nice modular.
Do you have photos of it or anything like that?
Um, I don't think so.
Maybe a few pictures on this one, if I want one.
Yeah.
I just, I would just like to ask that before you decide yes or no, that we see what we, what you have, and we make a deci, or they make a decision and share with us about the entry, how to get in there, and how they will come and go. And I would like to encourage, if you have a, drive through the Ridge's, Doug, I think you all are thinking about locating that, like eventually maybe. Drive through there, look around and see what you think about what I've said about lots up there. See if your opinion is there with mine, and see what you think about houses over there. Beautiful area. We just don't wanna do anything to take their value down. Beautiful area. And I have no problem at all, but I would like to know where they plan to enter and exit, and what the modular home is gonna look like, basically, not exactly, and the area they're gonna put in. Because I don't even know where they're talking about anything. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll show all this to you.
That's correct.
So this is the designer we're thinking, and then not that style, but a different color. It's probably a white flash, but that is the stuff, the interior of the... And then what color is it? And then a gray stone slash, and that's how I thought we already did the sign.
The back door. Can we also see?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so do I have a motion to favor, until we get further details, to approve it, or?
I make a motion that we, that we give further details on driveway location of said home. Fair enough to both.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. All right, all in the paper? All taken up? All opposed?
Diane, Cheryl, could you clarify with the folks what, what you are, the, what you tabled, what you need to be brought back?
Yes. I think, um, and you can add in, but I think, just print that out, the picture, and then I think you need to specify where it's gonna be on the land that you own, and to specify how you're going to get there.
The driveway's kinda important. I think you have to come up Price Street, because that lot is not adjacent to the condos there. You would have to get approval from someone else to come across that. It's funny, you have to come up off of, off of Price Street.
Yeah, so if we could just have a, a little more specific information, and the size of the home, and what you're gonna add on to, if you're gonna add on a garage, or a carport, or a porch, or, and then how you're gonna get there, and where it's gonna be placed. Is that right, Seamus?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move to the next one.
Excuse you, Diane, this, these, I believe, chairs, I believe, will be here, but you'll be at the next table.
Okay.
The next one is an application submitted by Justin Stiltner for conditional use permit to place at 400 square feet, property on the side of the home in a C1 commercial district. The property is located at 360 West Main. All adjacent property owners have been notified.
Okay, is Mr. Stiltner here? Would you like just to tell us a little bit about what you're planning to do? Well, we have a, okay, but I think, um, one of our questions is, this is 38, but is this just a picture kind of of it, that maybe the, the dimensions are not, is what you're proposing?
That's right.
Okay, 'cause this was more square feet than what you applied.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you want a 30 by 40?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have that. And I also think I understand that you bought the adjacent lot beside of your backyard to where, that's where this is going?
Yes, ma'am.
The 527?
Yes.
And do you have anything else to tell us about the, is it gonna be siding?
It's, it's metal siding.
Metal siding?
Yes, ma'am.
You have concrete, so that...
Yes, sir.
And when you, I had a question about, I know that the property setbacks are only five feet to this, but would you have any idea how much room there's gonna be once you...
I kinda have it marked off now, to get a general idea. Uh, the setbacks are gonna be anywhere between, uh, six to 10 feet.
Justin, is that off the, six to 10 feet, is that off the property line, or is that off the roadside, or is that...
It's off, off, uh, three, three of the sides, the roadside, the street side, and both...
And when you measure, you measure the property line, not the street, correct?
And there's no window? And there's no windows, no test doors, and?
Ten foot tall garage doors.
Ten by ten, yes, sir. It'll have twelve foot walls, I think the center, and the middle will be approximately fifteen feet, the center, plant don't have power in it, but no water, any other utilities.
And this is for cars?
It is, it's just, yeah, just put you just on this garage. We have one car for it now, we're putting a, putting a door on for just the single car, so we just get that.
So, you're going to have this side, side on the twelve?
The lean-to, I'm still debating on the lean-to, if I do, it's just going to be gravelled under, and that's just for some extra outside storage, if it won't have any lights or anything, no, no power in the, if I do that, but the concrete slab itself will just be a third by four, the four inch thick concrete slab.
So, did you count this lean-to and the six to ten foot setback?
Yes, ma'am.
We can come in off Russell Street, we'll be facing Russell Street.
It, it will not, it'll actually be facing the, the roller doors will be facing my, my property, what the road is, yes, sir. So, once I turn into the driveway that I have now, I can, I can just turn into the road.
Okay, driveway comes in by.
Yes, sir.
You said six to ten feet, what's the setback from the neighbor in front, three, is it three fifty-eight?
What is it required to be?
Now, what's yours going to be along from the property line?
Um, it's going to be, I think it's eight feet on that side. The way I have it set, and I can adjust it, I can, I can do some adjusting to it, a little bit closer to the, my current lot, where I live, where my home is, if I need to, you know, give more space around it, but the way I have it now, there's enough room to, to put a vehicle on every side of it, and not be on the joint property.
Have any more questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here against this submitted application? Do I have any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All opposed? All right, Diane, you're ready for the next one, okay.
An application submitted by Linda Maxfield, the OLC, and Linda Maxfield for conditional use permit for residential use, the property is located at 54 Cleveland Road, in the Seaborn Commercial District, all dates of property have been notified.
Okay, is Ms. Maxfield here?
No, I want to represent her.
Oh, dear.
Good having fun.
Well, welcome.
Because I'm already a snake, and I believe it is real deep, but Lynn and I worked together a long time, and I've had some help issues, best and family, so I thought I'd kind of try to handle it, it's just a lot of crap to do, I guess, I don't know really if it'll be, and it's been an Airbnb, and I have trouble with that word, I think I'm supposed to be talking about my old baby when I was a little kid, and it really throws me off, because I'm talking about that, but it's Airbnb now, and all I want to do is to rent it, residential, now, first of all, I don't see any difference much, Airbnb, being rented, and then somebody rented, a day's money, so, that's basically what we do, and then I suppose, Drew, we're looking at a conditional use permit, so.
Conditional use for residential use and commercial zone.
Right, so we're not, what we changed was allowing you to spend, asking for conditional use permit, so that's, that's kind of on short of that.
So, instead of people paying to live there, like a week to week, or whatever, it would just be one person?
I, I imagine, I anticipate renting to somebody, because I live, I live, but you'd like the neighbors being regular, yeah.
Any questions?
I can ram it.
Is there anybody here against this submitted application? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, now, Diane, I think that's all that we have, since we've already taken care of the other two committees, okay?
Do we need to table, may I raise?
Uh, do we need to make them?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, so, is there a motion to table?
I'll motion table.
All right, all in favor, against?
So, how many do you need to table?
Two. The Hughes and the Newberry, the rest of them are ready. And it'll be here.
Mrs. Chairman, Mrs. Chairman? Okay, so, we're not taking up the two other applications tonight?
We have taken, apparently, they came and spoke at the last meeting, for the public part, and then we have taken it up earlier, before we.
We already have a recommendation.
This meeting started, we're ready to give you our recommendations.
This is what y'all pay me for, is to say there are two.
This is what y'all pay me for, is to say there are two.
This is the point of recommendation for the town, so, is there a recommendation from the, the middle of, and then the town has to like, for it.
This is the time I close the joint, meeting, claim the plan of condition, ten eleven. Now, Chair, you have recommendations to make to the council?
I do.
We're going to do these one at a time.
Okay.
If you ever come up, I'll use you, right? In few.
All right, do you want me to start?
Start.
In regard to Chad Newberry, application to go from commercial to R1, we are going to table that until he can be present. In regard to Pam.
One at a time. We're going to vote, say.
Oh, you're going to vote, okay.
May I move the table, the applications to be, to Chad Newberry for zoning?
Say.
For the discussion, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, okay.
Okay, Pam and Shannon Hughes, who are in a Seaborn, wanting a permit for residential use, our recommendation is to table that until we get further specific details.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, that we accept that motion.
So, second?
I'll say.
In further discussion?
Mayor, I'll do a discussion, we're just briefly, I had some notes here about verifying the location, what you all are doing of the driveway, so, we also need to verify where Jean's Drive becomes a private, and is there a recorded right of way, and where does it end? I would imagine this, where it becomes private, because I know it's a, it's a double paved up to the, up to their property, and it becomes a single paved driveway, is something we could pull on the deed or the plaque?
I think the right of way goes on what it hurts property line. It's like in the seven, that street line.
So, that's a, that's a continuous right of way all the way to the town?
I, I, from memory, I think it is.
And do we know who the property owner is between the jeans, and?
Well, it's, it's the town, and the town owns that right of way, that's the last one, that was all we found in the sentence, the town owns that street.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, sir.
In favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side.
Okay, Justin Stiltner submitted an application to have a 400 square foot garage at the back of Hughes property, and our recommendation was to approve that.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor. Second.
Have a motion, and second, regarding this application, any further discussion?
The optional lean-to, Justin, is here. I was just going to ask, is it on the roadside or the property side? But I guess it's okay.
I think, from what he said, it was the property.
Property side. Probably the same, I would imagine, so, it would be one of those.
And he said he wasn't sure if he was going to do it, but there was still eight feet once he, if he did that.
That's good.
Anything else, in all those, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side.
Okay, Linda Maxfield submitted an application to, in a Seaborn zone, to change from Airbnb to a residence, residential. And we approve that.
So, do you have a motion, is your second?
I'll say.
Further discussion? In favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose, same side.
Okay, Michelle and Matthew Reeves came before last month, and talked about an application on their property with zoning from an R1 to an R2, for the purpose of putting a home, and our recommendation was to approve the zoning from R1 to R2.
Okay.
Not all.
Got you, the zoning.
The zoning.
I have a motion regarding, Planing Commission's recommendation regarding zoning.
I'll make that motion.
As I was saying, I need a motion before we make.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion?
Under discussion, Drew, is there any offsetting limits with the highway boundary, just from, the only thing that really bothers is just where their property line starts from the highway, wherever that way is at, and then you can see, like, setbacks, that sort of thing, would just be from their property line?
Thank you.
I have a question, so, the zoning is approved, so we do, their home is going to be a separate?
I assume it's a separate, will that be a separate thing?
If they wanted to put a mobile home in, they would have, still have to apply for conditional use permit.
Mobile home or modular home?
They can do a modular home right now, R1.
They were going to do a double, because they knew what he talked about.
The cost.
Which is why I didn't reply.
Which means? Okay.
And at that point, then you can put.
But we're not sure where it's coming, or?
Right, we don't know at this point.
We don't know any information.
So, the motion basics to change the zoning, then we'll move forward with the next request, do you have a motion, is second, any further discussion? In favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side.
Gray Fields has requested to change his property from an R1 to an R2, and our recommendation is to approve the zoning.
Just like the previous.
Yes, it's the opposite side of it, but.
Zoning, yes, okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
So, second?
I'll say.
Any further discussion?
Yes. Then we have neighbors of the property, asked to do the same thing a couple years ago, the King family.
Now, this is zoning request, though, this is not, they're not asking for a conditional use permit to put that house on that property, is that correct, Kim?
Not yet.
Not yet, they will.
No, but in that, what, he's talking about the group that came here?
The Kings.
The Kings.
The Kings actually didn't, they withdrew their request, it's out of common, before any action taken on Denver.
Yeah, but what was their original request?
They had filed a motion for a, request for conditional use permit, then they withdrew it, I believe.
But what was R1?
Yeah, well, I don't think they ever submitted a request for rezoning, but out of common.
So, this is, again, Danny, this is strictly a zoning matter.
Strictly a zoning.
Okay, just like the previous.
Broke off, out of America.
Okay, all right, Mr. Limer?
How about no?
Uh, Mr. Limer?
No.
Mr. Kegman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Mr. Gilmer?
I oppose.
Bunch of fails, names, is that correct, is that the four, two, two, four? Okay.
Okay.
Again, we want to thank our Planing Commission for a lot of the work to do for citizens here in town, it's tough, it's a difficult job when you deal with folks' property, we appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we're going, if you really get to the second page of your agenda, we have that public request on the agenda, Mr. Newberry will not be here tonight, he'll be here at our main meeting, before we get to the Quench Valley Soil and Water, let me give you an update while we've asked him to be here, or I asked him to be here, this is related to the grant that I mentioned at the last meeting for the welcome area out at the west end of town on the property, the VDOT McCannan, since that project began, the rules have changed, the long and the short of it, is that that property's no longer available, that VDOT has limited, they have regulations now on grading issues, and they wish to continue to use it for their trucks, storage of equipment. for their trucks, storage and equipment, like we have been. So we had, if you remember, we had submitted a grant, contemplated a grant for this project through DC that we withdrew. I asked, talked to Jonathan asking to go on the draw. So then I got to thinking, if you've not been by, I asked you to go by. We mentioned the project out at what we, back several years ago, called the Hill City Project, which is the property west of the government center on the hill. They have already, I can't remember how big it, was that grant about 50, 80,000, somewhere in there?
The one that we got was 80,000.
The one we all have cleaned off the property. So they're coming tonight and we're looking at another option and hopefully a way to get that grant funded for the trail area, walking trails in that area. Shelter or stage area, whatever we call it, to enhance that property, make this available to the citizens here in town and those who visit us here at town. So come on up, who's their speaker?
Jeff and I are gonna speak together.
Okay. Tag team.
Tag team.
Okay.
So I'll first ask, does this get put into your board packet or?
Yes.
Okay, so if you want to follow along, that's what we'll be summarizing. We're not gonna read it word for word. But anyhow, I wanted to say thank you to the county council and mayor for inviting us here tonight. Again, my name is Sharon Machida, I'm the district manager at Quench Valley Soil and Water Conservation District. This is my coworker, Jeff Mutter. Jeff has been the lead on this project as far as helping bring the information to us, getting contractors out there and working with me on making sure all the grants get done all at the right time or check marks. So I just wanted to give you a little brief history. I don't know how many of you might have been on the board 15 years ago, or excuse me, the town council or active there. But recently, I guess in 2023 is when we started being, becoming interested in this piece of property, essentially because we moved our offices down to the government center. And looking out of our windows, we saw all the invasive species that were growing there. Seeing fairly neglected piece of property trash up there. And all of us in our office were like, man, what an opportunity to build an education zone for our community, for our schoolchildren, for our people to know about. They plant trees, pollinator habitat. And we had someone come to us, talk to us about a wellspring grant. So I don't know if you know about the wellspring grant, but that's for health and wellness for communities. So that's a very big. It's a big grant, it's an awesome one. I really hope we can get all our ducks in a row. That was what my first goal was, was that wellspring grant. Then we started seeing the channel that's up there in the middle of the property. You can see it very well now. I don't know if any of you all had an opportunity to do your phone on the QR code, but that will open up our website and specifically the whole Hill City Grant. What Mayor Doby referred to earlier, that was 2010. So this project kind of has been on the town's mind for over 15 years now, I'd say. That was with Virginia Tech's Community Design Assistance Center. They, I don't know who reached up to them or they just thought this was an opportunity. I would guess Nathan Brown probably had something to do with it as he was graduate from that program. So perhaps he was the one that put those two groups together. If you're not so savvy with your phone to do the QR code, but in orange there is our, is what you can type in at Forlink at home. If you haven't had a chance to drive by, this is the before and after photo that was taken about a year apart. And you can see that white trees are all the Bradford pears that are not our favorite trees because they're invasive species, they don't really do much for pollinators. And we're happy that they're all gone now. Let's see, I think I jumped into your space, Jeff, so I'll let you. I'll let you take that. So that's where we are currently. We've got this great Hill City plan to sort of bring us ideas, have images to show people. We don't want to build exactly what's in that. We're a little more realistic than what the Virginia Tech students have as a student project. So I get some money, I say, what can we do with this? And we're trying to move forward. Let me just go over the bullet points, trail systems, native plants, habitat restoration, educational signage and outdoor classroom. That's our four goals. And let's see, I think I'll let you talk about what we've gotten done so far, Jeff.
Absolutely, so so far the work that's been done, if you guys have driven by, you've found this, especially there's all Bradford pears gone. A lot of the other invasives like autumn hollow and tree heaven, they'll also have been taken out.
One in the roots.
Yes, sir.
You might want to explain to all of us the invasive, the reason you get really the invasive plants.
Sure, absolutely. So Bradford pear specifically, you know, it's having more of a four mill landscaping tree. The people have been putting them for their landscaping and so forth. Unfortunately, they're not native to this area and they spread fairly easy through fruits, the birds and other animals eat. And so with their dense spreading across the property, it's important to try to take it out before those trees continue to do screw and spread those seeds. So you might notice in Lebanon, we're pretty native with Bradford pear. But with this property in general, it was by my estimation, 80 or so trees that were on the property that have now been removed, which is a big plus in our eyes. And the reason the invasives are so bad is because it shades out and competes with native vegetation that's supposed to.
Supposed to grow here.
Supposed to grow here.
So let me just give you an example of like the monarch butterfly. Okay, so that's, I know that's not everybody's biggest concern in this world, in this room, but it is a species and it is just like, you know, a key to this big web of everything that creates our world. So as non-native plants take over, then there's the shading out of pollinator habitat. And so then the monarch butterfly that has to travel from Mexico all the way to Canada, that's part of the breeding cycle. It flies and stops right here in Lebanon. But if we plant these plants that aren't native to this area and they take over like the tree of heaven or the Bradford pear, then those native plants that the monarch butterfly would land on and live on and reproduce on, they don't have that place. And so their numbers are falling and falling. And I know you've heard thousands of different, it's the same thing. So that's, that's why we don't want to encourage people to plant non-native species and especially these that are invasive that really spread.
Sure. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. So as we were saying, the work to remove these invasive species have already, is already begun and pretty much in it. We're pretty much wrapped up with the invasive removal phase of this practice or this project. We bitted that project out to Appalachian Land Works with Wes Gibson, who had a still bidding process. And he got to work pretty much immediately after I got the phone with him and told him he's awarded. And he just pretty well wrapped up everything. So if you hadn't had a chance to go drive by there and take a look at the work that he's done, I'm highly recommend it. You can see a lot more about what the property actually has on it and is less fair than well. So we're really happy to have been able to use the Urban Community Forestry Grant for that work. And we still have some work to do with that grant before it ends in December of 2026. So our next steps now is to help native plant restoration on property, which means planting new trees, shrubs, grass, native grasses, herbs, to try to reestablish that native plant habitat and also, you know, help control any soil erosion that might be happening on the property. We also have money set aside for that grant to do some initial trail design and cost estimations for in the future. So then we have a couple of other issues on the property that we need to address before we get to a trail, ask a trail phase. But we want to go ahead and get that design pretty well in place, try to stay a step ahead so that one of these stormwater issues get resolved or can be managed better. And we're ready for a trail system, we can go all in on it and pursue grants like the wellspring grants or some of the grants that are in the property.
The solid plan of the trail is really key to those grants, like the wellspring grant. They want to see, just like you all were discussing earlier, which way you're gonna come into the driveway, you know, driveway. They want to see what are you actually doing. So this part of that $80,000 is a line item to do a design on it for the trail.
And more to go?
Yes, so that, to be clear, that urban and community forestry grant, that's one that we have and it is a reimbursable grant, so we're working with that funding right now. And we have until December of 2026 to complete our tasks there. We've just submitted a grant for $15,000 and we're hoping to find out in May this year if we receive that grant. That one is going to specifically address the grasses that are in the zone. Let's see, was that image on our website or that one?
I don't think that document stood a whole website, but particularly the area closer, just right beside the government center, below the stormwater drainage. So kind of between, I guess it's right there behind Seehell. Kind of that little corner there.
And very importantly is a motor path that will be in the collision between the farmer's market and where the dam is currently. So that is again, starting to try to make this connection of how the community can access the property safely. First, we're gonna start with a mode access so that it's not quite ready for a sidewalk yet. Like I said, the design for it has to go in there. So that's a fairly small grant, that's through the nature conservancy and UVA wise. They gave us great belief that we will be able to get that grant. They're really excited about it, so I'm excited about it. And they also said it's one that can be continuously renewed if we have like another $15,000 project. Like maybe part of the education center, like the busy afterwards, outdoor classroom, whatever we might get to. So that's, that's a good relationship that we're building there and I'm excited about that. Hopefully they'll have some good news for us in another run. Let's see. We got all of those things. Oh, we will be doing some herbicide treatment with both, both of these two grants. That will be key because just coating all of those invasives, which is what we've done so far, if you do nothing, it'll just spring like that up. So we'll be doing some spraying in the fall, is that correct?
Yeah, probably fall time. Application of herbicide, just getting any new sprouts that's coming back and to, you know, put in management. At least for the initial new drifts.
As we move forward, if we go to the DC the grant request, versus Max and that. Can you assist specifically in the grant, I probably will ask for it. Have you had a delphine area, would you use that?
I think that we have definitely.
250.
Yes, Ernie and I have been talking and so I think we'll be able to put together. The key here is that, is that drainage.
Yes.
Thing and that is.
Are we still working playing group on that?
The drain, we have, we have a study grant, playing group is a study. I'll tell you one study, what it would take to fix that. We then got put on hold to make sure that this VDOT sidewalk work wasn't wanting to be included.
I get you.
Came to the point now that, that we don't think any culverts or anything like that in that section is wanting to be included in the VDOT.
Okay.
Sideboard part.
So that's a real key one. It's, it's gonna be fairly expensive for it, right? Like that's what we kind of got from the first.
Matthew and them, lean that group for anything is.
So your DC the grant is not, it doesn't go for that kind of thing, I don't think. But we're gonna have to just try to dig and find some, we're gonna have to get some work together through the town to kind of make this happen because I'm hoping that we're gonna get some momentum here and maybe make, maybe come together. Well, it's maybe an opportunity to help us with that. I've got to look into it. Let's see, so Drew mentioned the VDOT sidewalk grant, you all know that very well, I'm sure. So we're really excited about that, that's gonna make this a full, full project that have a lot of match potential to go with, with any grant that we have.
Yeah, because this came all the way around to the corner end.
Yeah, and it comes onto the property. So it's kind of a great access for anybody who wants to use property for recreation.
So Jeff, why don't you give them a little bit of data about the stormwater retention time?
Yep.
And the channel stabilization and the work that was done on the dam so far and what may, still needs to be worked on.
Yes.
I don't mean to rush you.
Okay.
We're gonna have to.
Zip it up quick?
Well, not zip it up quick, do a summary.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead. As far as, you know, the dam itself is concerned, we've removed vegetation off it. So we did that with this past week. So that's been great, that's a positive direction because we have new trees, vegetation growing on the dam other than grass. So we've got that count back to a base lawn, which is great.
And that's, that's a town owned dam for lots of preventions, so that is holding water, the stormwater, anytime we have these big remnants from going all down into our office and to all that, yeah.
Anyways, as far as the getting water there, that's kind of the biggest point, you know, stream channel for the stormwater channel being heavily corroded and just deteriorated over time. That needs to be worked on, water action to the pond. And there's also a lot of sediment in the pond that needs to be dredged out. And that's something that we're working to try to find out more on is what the original elevation of that pond is to figure out how much soil is actually accumulated into that pond to hopefully get it back to its original designs level. And be able to hold more stormwater.
As you, I'm sure all know, things like that are supposed to be maintained, I don't know, on a yearly basis, every other year basis, it should have been cleaned out, trees should have never been grown in the bottom of that thing. And that column that you see in the middle of the storm drain, it has, it has a drain hole about right here and the soil is up to that. So it's at least a foot deep with sediment, probably more. Then the next drain hole is up here and then it goes up over the pond on fully big enough. So it really needs maintenance. I'm actually happy about that because that means that it's not, it's not working as it's supposed to be designed to work. So hopefully if we get it cleaned out, we'll get less flooding down through all the way to the farmer's market and everything else. A little bit of information about the current cycle fields. That's another thing that Ernie and I, Ernie and I have been talking about. So that also drains to that same pond. And we were talking about how potentially that would be great if that could stay as nice fields so that it doesn't add water to this pond that maybe is undersized. So he's thinking about things in that area too and is starting to contemplate different ideas. So that's, that's a potential of another connection of outdoor recreation zone connecting both the hillside grant, I mean speaking hillside project and the summer fields as maybe a permanent part of weapons, community activities. So we'll just really quickly get a couple of these future goals. We would like to say that we're going to keep applying for funding. We're gonna maybe potentially be able to work with CGI to put in some storm water reduction projects, which would help with sending so much water down the way. I haven't even opened that book yet, but that's one of my goals. Is just to bring that to the table, see if anybody's interested in that. And let's see, wellspring grant, I'd like to revisit the DEQ stormwater grant. I think that's a potential. It would be key if I could get CGI to do what, do what I just said, and then for us to get that DEQ grant. And then the CEDA grant, see where that fits into all of this. Is there anything else that I?
Well, I think the biggest thing going forward too is just continuing to foster, you know, collaboration between the town, IDA and other partners to help create. know, collaboration between the town, I D A, and other partners to create tourism, provide recreational areas for people since it's, you know, better around the government area.
And reduce the stormwater.
Sure.
Those are your goals.
Thank you for the work you've already done. Does council members have questions while they're here with us?
Please feel free to stop by our office anytime. We're focused on, you know, on the building there. So just to the left of where the, where the county board superintendents meet. And we're happy to walk with you up there, talk to you about what we're doing or just show you plans or anything that we've got going on.
We'll be doing it. And I know Drew's working with y'all as well. So that's a good communication for us, okay?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
So at this point, you all have a specific answer from the town?
We are going to be asking for continuous support in this project. We're going to be asking to stay the course on this stormwater thing. So that's going to be where, I don't know what the town is going to be able to do. They're going to pay hours to it. They're going to have to pay some money to it. I mean, it's currently failing and it is potential. The dam was actually the danger zone until the work that we just did with this grant. So.
And it's actually going to contribute to our problem then of the difference in the water quality.
It's also that that's the whole drainage system.
Which then gets to the bottomers when that issue.
Yeah.
The retention pond, does that, does it need to clean that out back to its original design? Does that need to be permitted by you all or D E Q or?
So from my conversations with D E Q, if we are maintaining the stormwater, I just need to write a letter saying we are trying to bring this stormwater retention ponds back into compliance. And my husband who reviews those permits, so that will be different.
Siobhan, part of the scope of work with Langgrub was an opinion of probable cost to fix or a different fix for the stormwater management or the channel, yes. Do you remember what those numbers were? Because we couldn't, we looked for it today and we didn't.
Yeah, I don't, I couldn't remember. I know he did the presentation out when we had that meeting, but I don't remember. I couldn't find any papers or.
It seemed like it was hundreds of thousands of dollars. Does that sound right?
I was remembering hundred and fifty, but.
I was thinking two hundred thousand dollars for some reason. So I was telling Drew. So we had any luck or any, I mean?
Well, we, I have not gone forward with the D E Q grant because I was kind of led to just hold on that. And so I'm ready to try that. I think it opens in August and closes in October or something. But talking with the lady that is in charge of that, or locally is in charge of that grant, that's Kelly Miller, she works right there with my husband. So she walked with me around the site and she said, okay, to reduce the nitrogen going into the system, that would mean like sucking water into the ground in some location further up. So that's where this C G I idea has come in.
Well, I think what we can do is just continue our discussions and what we, before we get to what your, what an ask is.
Yeah.
Think Mr. Gillers asked a very good start of the point because we need to know, what can you all even know when you're seeking grants?
Right. Well, this, this Langgrub study, I think we need to definitely, like I would encourage y'all, this problem's not going to go away. And whether we just do the trees and remove the invasive species and we finish our eighty thousand dollar grant and just make, well, that's it. This is a stormwater issue that between you guys and I D A probably just need to figure it out. Like some money's going to have to be put into it. So I don't know what the town has as far as stormwater management funding, but that's, this is a concern and it is affecting your farmer's market and everything you do down.
Down the stream.
Not to mention all offices of the government.
Oh, yeah.
So what happens at both the government's area, there's all people that's losing hours and hours and hours of technical work and the rock.
We just have.
We don't want, we don't want to see.
Well, these hundred year flood events are, storm events are happening more and more as we know. So it's probably something that's just not going to go away. We did just have in our board and my board director, I mean, there was an announcement about FEMA funds for events that happened on that President's Day weekend and Russell County got listed in that group. So I was like, I wonder if we can talk to FEMA about that channel.
Particularly since it's the flooding issue.
Right. So that's, that's another kind of far reach idea of mine that I'm going to try to follow up here.
Okay. Thank you all.
We'll keep searching for some.
All right. We'll be in touch. We'll be talking. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. This is Melissa Kajner. It's like Price is Right, go on there.
Probably there's a much wider note.
Good to see you.
Tell these everybody y'all know what they're doing.
Oh, Melissa Kajner, she's great, sure.
Okay. What, I guess it might be this, because I just asked you guys what question should, would you get the paper?
It's in our gym.
Okay. I probably need, there is on here, it's like God wire. I mean, we are a national qualification. That's going to mean a lot of living. Maybe probably should take all of this completed, but we'll see. So we've already got trucks from Wyoming, Wisconsin, Georgia. It's covering a lot of people's hands. So I'm going to get my field.
Sure.
So some of the points that I printed, that we printed out was just about, there's no way the park though is parting, of course. We're going to put cap on it, you know, which is what we're going to have to do because we can't res, mention those soccer fields, you know, in the back with trucks. So we thought about putting the kids on back there, you know, regarding the battle of health is just going to turn that worse this year because I was about to say it. So we thought about doing that. I wanted to actually go all about closing the road, seeing about getting a road closure between Wendy's, just that little section there, the two lane road between Wendy's and the government center. Do you have the main?
Main street then to the parking lot?
Yes. Yeah. Just to put food trucks down that road right there. It would still need to open, the road open behind there.
So how it could go through technology park.
There's still a way for everybody to.
There, there is.
Oh, yeah, that's still.
They could sort of.
That would open it so much space.
The only, it's not an issue because it would be an issue anyways. That would, that would increase traffic between the kids on and the government center. But like those residents have to get out. So we just have to.
Yeah. Maybe maybe we'll be too bad.
Well, we'll have, we'll have.
We have people there.
Tell at least, I mean, we can work together on the, on the traffic issue.
I think that'd be, it'd three up a lot of space if we could get the food truck out of parking lot.
Sure, sure.
And we may, the stage, I don't know where we're going to put it yet. Yeah, it's really, I know we can't put it up there like we used to near the building. Is that great?
Yeah.
Okay. I can't put it up there. So we're going to have to put it, I think, in a far corner, which I'm not sure how that sound to work with everything. But like where the shade is and then the main building, I could get it up there in that corner. Not sure about that. But it needs, we got, we got to figure that out. So if anybody has any ideas on that, that'd be great. I'll appreciate that. Because I don't know.
So the stage was, was backed up to the government center?
It was like the first three years.
Then we moved it to the bar.
But then, yeah, there was some work.
Caitlin can speak to it.
Caitlin.
In a fire issue, fire control marsh, we cannot put it close to the building. Like I can get a fire lane open in case a fire does happen there. So it got to be away from the building in case a fire like this happens. So the family got to be kept clear.
Put it at the west end, at the far west end?
I don't know. I just want to check out. But he might wish I space.
Down where you said.
They told the soul of water. Soul of water lady, the property that we just got through.
Yeah, that's where I was thinking. Probably, probably on those, don't have to worry. But I think it's, it's a lot of those employees don't leave until like one o'clock, two o'clock. The stage is going to have to hit it on Thursday.
So I think the issue, was there a power issue? What was the issue down, down low?
Yeah, we, well, really not a huge issue. We just was trying to get all that cleared out where we could have registration there as everybody came downhill at Wendy's. And opening that up a little bit, trying to make it just a little, the flow a little bit better in his. But, but it's going to be hard because I know those kids have to have a place to park and they usually have that section over toward the farmer's market. And I know it's hard for them to clear out. I'm asking a lot of them to just close that today.
Well, they've been doing that, closing.
Oh, yeah. They close. I mean, but we'll have to have a stage in there. Um, I don't know. You know, it's working. I don't want to make any, I don't want to.
They didn't work with you.
Yeah, we'll work with them. Yeah. So. Yeah. Yeah.
Not a part of that area. We can't put a permit back there.
Yes. But I'm sure a bit.
It's not off.
But, um, the stage is, I think I talked with you about. Did y'all see that? Did y'all see a copy of the?
Just need to call.
Appreciate that. Um, I know you guys have every year summit, but if we could just get that stage paper, it would be greatly appreciated. I'm not sure that can happen, but we're asking. So we're just, we're trying to keep everything. Like a lot of people donate, but I'm trying to keep everything for kids, everything for, I don't want them to have paper or anything. So we're just trying to raise all that we can to, to, to review that. And I think it's going to be, we're anticipating a larger crowd. So.
Well, it's going to be a lot of work.
And I hope it brings, you know, I hope it brings as much to the town, you know, as like with the restaurants and hotels. And I mean, I hope that it brings you all good business too. So I hope I'll really, it works out, you know, very well. So. And Angie, um, they found me coming up with a plan for a park. That's another big issue. We don't have a park. So do y'all have any thoughts or ideas? Or we thought about working a transit offer to let us use the use of two of their vans if we got a driver storm. But we would have to designate parking areas through the town, which she may need to talk to Drew about. But try to find some, that we could advertise that on our website and everything, like parking spaces just for the spectators and then bus them to the location. I don't know. What are y'all thoughts on that?
Well, we've done, we've requested parking lots at high school. We just go out there and bring buses. We've got a bus too though.
Yeah, I talked to Drew about it too. Sorry.
You know, we can, they park out there and we bring them to the site.
Another benefit of the, of the buses is because we don't have an accurate count on how many people show up. It makes grants a little bit more difficult when they ask for how many people are there. So we'll be able to count how many people we transport.
We applied for a grant for the last two years. They want numbers.
Sure.
So we got to get numbers this year because there's too many places to go in and out from the truck shop. So we got to figure that out this year. So we.
Friday evenings, you may issue Saturdays, we could, there ought to be more parking available to town, shouldn't it?
Yeah. If we do the transit, we need dedicated parking areas so that we can advertise this is where you park to get picked up and the times that we pick up.
Or schools.
Didn't the hospital allow us to use the bottom lot there?
Yeah, I already talked to Susan about that too.
School will be back in.
It's not going to be again.
Yes. It'll be back in my weekend or that week. So about that.
C G I, like completely back in the office?
I wonder about that.
A couple of days a week, I think. Like everybody that's working there now is up to three days a weekend house, I think.
You could possibly talk to them. I could figure out if you talk to them or actually probably they're could as well.
The line.
Chad, Chad Neighbors also told us that we can use his property for parking if we can get, we talked to him about that issue. We're just trying to find some people around that won't, don't mind, you know, and just.
Browners.
That would be, well, school, we could use it on Saturday though.
Yeah.
I mean, we just have to maybe not worry so much about.
Do you stay focused on that?
Uh, it's, I think it's, people here know for sure. I think it's that week of the truck show.
It was the second week of August last year.
Yeah, it started the eleventh.
Teachers go back, I guess.
Yeah. And school won't start on second week.
So we don't go back to Monday again.
Yeah. It'd be absolutely, be great.
Good deal. That'd be good.
Unless they backed it up or you.
Okay, that's good.
Eight or nine last year.
It was on the, the truck show weekend last year. But it started on that pride. Yeah. Yeah. It started then. So I'm not sure. I'm going to ring one of the company that we used last year for cleaning up.
It's not the first one yet.
Great. And I spent three hours down there on Sunday before church picking up trash. But so we got to figure out something about trash pickup and, you know, keeping the bathroom, you know, all that good stuff. Then, so.
So then your request for you and our guys to help again?
Well, we love that. I don't think we got to do that last year.
Drew, I don't believe we did.
It was surprising we had those people there.
You know.
That was, that was.
That's what the crisis was last year.
Yeah. So it worked great when your house guys did it. They were saying, it was great. But last year was a disaster. I'm not even sure the name of that company. I hate to say that I got someone with it. It was just bad. So I think that's about everything, isn't it? We needed to, just the road closure. I mean, if anybody had any ideas about park, you know, parking or, I say we're going to have, we do need to spend a bigger crowd. So we got to go ahead and be ready for that. And that means getting your house held. But we appreciate everything you have to do.
Well, we'll, I just ran up to the government school to, I was with.
Right. That's even better.
I was with two thousand twenty-five.
Okay. So that works good. And another thing, I don't know if I read through this flat lines and stripes, national qualification. We're unique because this town is a beautiful town, not just because of the work we did with the truck show. They went through a hundred and some shows and kept, and having these listed here to do this. So they really liked our town. They liked whatever it is. They liked what we've been for. Something that should be on everything throughout the town and through everybody. So.
It was just a win-win, I think, for all of us.
I hope so. I hope we don't have too much trouble.
You're not.
But, um, well, I hope not. Is there anything you should really ask me or what someone did a different? Anything?
Any questions?
Something that we need to work on?
Mary, you going to be a conduit with the county administrator on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I with it.
Parking and all that logistics would work.
That'd be great.
Because I thought it's a good place for a stitch.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that'd be good. What were your thoughts on that contract? Did you look over it?
Well, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's pretty comparable to what we've done, been doing. We looked at the.
Pretty good price.
See if it's good.
It's a good price.
Yeah.
It's a good price.
Well, I don't think I think they do with the, the Bennett family, I'm sure, because they're going to be here. They don't have to live in those, those big way.
The Bennett family is their captain?
Yes. They're going to be here with their setup and everything. So, because they're the sponsors of this whole national championship. So I think it's the guy giving them more favor than they have no idea.
Okay.
So it's, that's what it is. So.
Okay.
All right. If y'all have any questions or we can do anything later, let me know.
All right. Thank you. Watch you all doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Nice gentleman here on the, is it pale? Can we go over there? So, go over. Yes.
I'm Donnie Bell and we're a power, a few cases construction provider at the county district. And we've been working, I've told you, been working with Drew and all of that. Prior to speaking, if additional use permit, we'll come in and have an opportunity to talk to you. We'll be able to put a hundred eighty foot tower down here behind the, uh, Mr. Stent's, he bears lots. And I know Drew's got some concerns about the height of that. And I'm here to kind of take back what I can and try to find a solution to use that property. The F C C, as you know, Lebanon is a very historic district and beautiful too. And so we want to be good corporate citizens. So rather than the condition use permit, come in and go about it that way. I wouldn't come and have an opportunity to talk with you to see if there's some suggestions you can give us to help us make this thing get done here. You know, there's a tower here on this side of town, a tower on this side of town. And there comes a time when you got to put one another with other.
I'm going to hang out. I'm going to hang a little.
And I'll just say, I am glad I got to be a state champion. My, my son was one of the, one of the state champions shooting green in football. And he told me, he said, on the day I was taking him back to school in Monday, he said, there's one thing I know for sure, Dad. What's that? He said, I have something you ain't never had. So what's that? He says, state championship. And I said, oh, that's my back.
So Drew, so a hundred eighty feet?
Yeah, we've met. I've actually talked with Ms. Wong, most of the southern towers. And they came, it's been a while actually that we've been talking about this. I mentioned to her, like I said, when it does require additional use permit. I mentioned to her, like I said, when it does require a condition use permit, uh, to even get it started. Uh, so we went to the historical district, talked about it, and they tried to see if there was any other areas in town, uh, called over the height. Uh, and the next step was they were wanting, they had proposed flying a balloon to try to get in the view of what that height would be. Uh, I guess there was some electric power lines or something in the way there. Uh, so I talked to Mr. Wong and just said, you know, the best thing I can do is probably just gonna come talk with the planning commission, uh, and hash out, try to figure out what you can do, where we, if there's any other sites that would work. Uh, and that's when Mr. Pell decided he just wanted to come talk to you guys.
Well, that, I mean, that's kind of damn near residential there, you know, that.
What about med flight and that kind of thing?
That new lifestyle.
Med flight, cause another time.
Sorry. Well, should I question about med flight? We'll, we'll have, we'll have full FAA approval already on that one hundred eighty feet. So I guess my proposal, because like we said, we, we offer fly level and there's power lines and stuff down there like that. And I, I hadn't seen the property until today, and I agree that probably a hundred eighty feet is, is too high. Uh, so what I'd like to propose is to bring a small crane in and set up in the back parking lot there. It'd be exactly where the tower goes, it's got all those wires going across it. But still, they're gonna get in there and set the crane, and we'll start at a hundred eighty feet and come down, and try to find the height that, that you guys could live with. You know, we could take a couple of different bandwidth points of things that are important to you, and use that crane all day and, and go to those places to, to try to figure out a way to make this thing as easy as. We want to make it tall enough so that we can provide for all the carriers, so, you know, a year from now, somebody else not coming, we want to put one across the street or something like that. We want to try to provide for all the carriers. This tower needs built for four, you can't go carry four people.
Four groups, four businesses, you know, you know where they leave.
Verizon's our main tenant, they're our major tenant. But this, they'll be designed big enough to carry four, four, three additional tenants.
Okay. Got a lot of, I need some more information, really.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll speak to it, but there's, I think it would be very detrimental to our view shade downtown. Regardless, the, the same concerns, a hundred eighty, I would probably have it a hundred. Uh, I don't think it, just right now at this point, I don't think it's a project that I could support. And that's just me individually.
Is there, is there a different place that we might could move that you could think of? I mean, you know.
It would be up to the regional investor park.
I have not been reasonable investor park. I did right through the technology, uh, part today.
Well, I, I kinda like where the other towers are on exterior of town.
Right, yeah.
And that's, that's the problem. Just to be honest with you.
Right, and, and those, they have three carriers on them, you see those three sets of antennas. Well, now it gets to the point where there's so much, uh, phone traffic going through those two towers, you just can't carry them. I'm sure there's probably times during the, like this, this truck event you have here, you're not gonna be serviced, because everybody's phone will reach capacity point, and that, so the way the, my cell tower works, kind of in really simple language terms, it. It will, it has a pilot channel that kind of sets the footprint of the site. As more carriers come on that site, it kind of starts to shrink up. Shrink up, so then you can't, so once those two are shrunk, shrunk so far, then you, you know, there's no more, you don't get five pounds of sugar and five pound bag.
So are you anticipating that we will have trouble with communications? Because I'm not, we're not having, I don't know of any businesses, the hospital, myself, or anyone that's having any trouble with, with communications in town at this point.
How about, like, when you have a truck show here?
I'm, I follow one.
I don't recall any trouble. I mean, any of, any of our events at this point, that I recall.
Yeah, so kind of the way we go, like, we don't, we don't pick where we build towers, uh, we have a period that comes to us, and Verizon came to us and said, yeah, we'd, we'd like to have a tower in there if you needed it done. And so we found a piece of property and, and we've been working on this thing for probably, I don't know, a year and a half or something like that.
So as far as proximity, it is not far away from the center of town, can we be?
Well, it's a fence. I mean, there's so many factors, you know, because there's so healing through here's.
What about popcorn, water towers in Stepford?
You take, you take the corner lot there where, uh, where Simmons just purchased, Polycap up there, down the corner.
That's why I asked you if you look at regional investor parks, it's on the.
It's up there next to Walmart.
Yeah, along the hill, if you're going, yeah.
It's the middle, it's the middle exit in town pretty well.
Yeah, it's on the very top, up there next.
Well, I think the other, the beauty plus the other tower, and Verizon's on both of these towers.
See, the other tower is just above the center.
Yeah, another one up there, but you're saying.
What's our tank, Drew, at the middle of town? Quilla, Quilla?
It's straight up behind you. Still, it's yours.
I mean, that's, it's an essential.
It's pretty close.
Part of town that we have.
That's the water.
What's the footprint?
Small, uh, the site, uh, we're proposing a sixty by sixty in there.
So it'll be a fence sixty by sixty, so, but take care of your guidebars and everything?
Well, it won't be a guide.
No guide.
It'll be, it'll be just a.
Straight fence.
Straight wall. It's something, it won't be like when these guy, when these big towers sit here, it'll be, uh, something more similar to, uh. We call it a bottom hole, it's, you can't say it looks like a street light because it's a lot taller than a street light, but it's, it's just a cylindrical pole that goes up. No guidebars on it, no three lanes, just a, a steel pole, and all the wire that we go inside.
Also the top of it.
Antennas, they put a platform there and put their antennas.
Just like we see in the suburbs.
Be smaller than that, so, because that platform, um, uh, a guy down, you know, sells four towers down like that, it's, you know, it's a lot bigger, because that place than that tower, but this will be on, cars shrunk down. And we can, we can try to make it as close to the, we can put the smallest platforms in there we can to kind of.
So at a hundred, a hundred and eighty feet in the middle of town, you have a big red flash light on?
No flash light.
There will not be a light on?
Well, we're not required by the FAA.
Okay.
Well, back to the, and the mid flight here.
The helicopter flies.
He says it's already approved of.
Yes. The mid flight hospital is just, you can eyeball, you can see it from where you're talking about.
But, and I have, I have a problem with the, uh, flashing red light at nighttime if, if, you know, that's, we can certainly do that. It's not a requirement, clearly, I'd say, hey, we can, we can, you know, we can always do more than what we're asking for, sure. Drew, what did, what did, uh, sorry, you, go ahead.
I just, that lights, I do a fight with people living.
The red's not so bad. It really flashes off, it doesn't, uh, you know, the, the white ones are, are the ones that are detrimental to the, I mean, they're not detrimental, but they're terrible when you walk in and you see one of them.
So historical, what specifically did they say in their letter? I never saw a copy of it.
They said, you know, it would, you know, affect downtown height, so that's when they asked them to check, check out other sites, and I think that's when they came back, so they couldn't find any other sites, and that's when we got to this point.
So do they use, do they use, um, specific language, like, that they oppose us approving?
I have to pull it up.
The reason I ask is because a lot of the grants that we've received, Mayor, uh, you know, they go through historical, you know, and keeping integrity of a historic district, I think, is important some of that funding.
Yeah, this is just a list of questions that we'll all have to address, you understand?
Yes, sir, and that's, and that's the reason we're beginning, rather than submitting a, uh, a, an application, I'd really come in and talk about it, and, and make you aware that we're trying to do it. You know, we're not trying to come slide in a little night or anything like that, and really want to make sure we.
You are, but you didn't send that aside.
Kind of, you can't, I mean, we can move, I'd rather move it, but that, that Verizon's picked that site, so they're, uh, they have approved that site.
So you picked those sites, so we approved this?
We, we tried to find other sites, we couldn't find any other places that were within that ring. Now, that ring is pretty small, that's something about a quarter mile ring. So there's not much, you know, when you go a quarter mile around that.
So the proximity of, of this tower needs to be a quarter mile from the statue in the center of town.
So it's crow flies?
Maybe quarter mile radius.
And you're really limit, I mean, he's really limiting on where he could put it. I mean, based, based on the, you know, who's got, who's got, you know, boundary to be able to put it in, uh.
Look, Quilla's probably been in that boundary, didn't it? Will?
I hope so.
The one is a quarter mile total, or is it a quarter mile radius?
Quarter mile radius.
This will be a half mile on the side of the side.
Yeah.
Or, or Carl, but, you know, but there's those, that farm land that, but, our first name is at Church Street.
Little church?
Yeah. The kiln tank.
So you're up in the private oil problem, private oil.
Yeah, we're up in the even, it didn't work. I mean, you know, Verizon wants a site here, and we want, we want to provide it, and we want to also be a good corporate citizens, we want, uh.
Are you quitting the ice here tonight, or traveling somewhere else?
I was going back to Chattanooga, but I can't spend the night.
You're back to Chattanooga tonight?
Well, I was gonna go to, I've, I've got a daughter in, uh, peaks for it, so.
I mean, could you spend the night and visit with?
Have some, yeah.
We're probably the assistant town manager.
The mayor, can you meet? I think that would be best, I mean, so the kiln.
I can say that I'd hurt him back next week, you know, I heard that.
Drew will probably be available next week, you can come visit.
I'll be here next week, yep.
From the statue to the kiln tank is four hundred and ninety-five yards.
Quill.
Quill, we don't, we don't, we don't do that up here no more. That's no longer the train station. You come back next week, I think I can bet.
I think, I might be able to make Drew do a little, I'd let you drive real thin, you know, and see some things that we're not seeing, okay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to, you know, that's, that was really the whole purpose of us coming, uh, simply to find a way to, you know, skin this gap.
Okay.
You just need to bring hand. Yep, and you, I mean, now you know where the monument is too, that'll give you a chance to do a metric, do a radius check.
Well, I'll get, and, and the lady that we had to do this out here, Chattanooga, she's, she's been a lot more time here, she's able to figure with the property that we talked to, so I've, I've heard, have heard her with. So that way we can all ride around and simply find a way to skin this gap.
Right, thank you.
Thanks guys for your time.
Honey, I'm good. I'm just, the longer I stay, the more I'm gonna ask for it.
Thank y'all.
I'm gonna skip you.
Halloween night exhibition?
Yeah, and I have more information about that other stuff I talked to you about.
Later.
I'm out of here.
She takes three minutes, Mayor.
No, I mean, I'll, I'll talk to her later, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna let you know.
We're good. I don't have a lot, so I'm good.
You're, you're setting your table for that.
How are y'all this evening?
Pretty good, how are you?
I'm pretty good, ain't no stranger, that's for sure, fellas. Something's coming my attention, uh, cancel me, you're working that, however you speak out here, I'm real sure I've been here since I was a teenager, got a skate park, maybe I took short damage. I ain't got a lot of time either, but I, I keep getting these business letters. And I've got several of these things. When I, I'm in property when I was not a man, apparently it's my taxes, taxes, senior citizens, directors, they get years off. Um, that's my final notice. Um, and I'm hoping not to ever receive another from this, from this board, or have this thing, because there's more problems than just like that property in this town. Uh, he's got broken down lawnmowers, five piles of firewood in his front yard, he's poor as hell, and he's a hillbilly, he's lived here same eight years, y'all know that. Y'all know him. Y'all know me, I put shingles on here, I cut my finger off in D-Bray. I break my business down later every time I need something. If I can't fix it, that's my go-to guy. Um, I talked to Mr. Short just the other day, I come out here, and for clutter and nuisance and, y'all been driving by, I've lived, I've lived in the river thirty-eight years, y'all. I drive by every time I leave my house. I don't say nothing about it, cause at the end of the day, it's one of my business. I can care less what everybody does with their property, but for some reason, someone cares about mine. I'm glad they do. Wish they'd paid the taxes, long as they care some damn money. Um, there's plenty of outsourced in our town. I've driven around today, pinpointed a few garages here and there, and. That's way worse than my dad's place, he can't even get around any garages, and if there's a catch on fire, people would die. I think that's more important than a sticker, a mud rail lawnmower, somebody's front, maybe all the time. Um, at this point, I feel we're being harassed, harassed or being infringed upon, and that's not right, y'all. I ain't going nowhere, my family ain't going nowhere, but I'm always gonna have crap in my neighborhood, y'all know that. Every day of my living life, cause that's how I make my living life in general. Just not my skill like everybody else's. I, I don't keep it very long. I pawed up the wood line. I ain't covered it up. I was going to, but now I'm not. I'm about to put up another wood line, it's all kinds of, just whoever's business it is that's mine or not. They don't seem to have enough time to mind their business alone. Um, these come from this ward, I was told, and it just, it aggravates the hell out of me, that this town has this much time to worry about someone's front yard. I've lived in South Town thirty-plus years of my life, ain't nobody ever made a hill of that South Town. Hell, cops don't even come up there much. I see gifts every now and then, but other than that, I see them go up and park and. Hang out up at the top of the hill after they're not, not caring about working out that house, but that's their business, it's not my, I don't care. I just, at this point, want my family to be left to hell alone, so we can thrive in our town that we love, with, with your, allowing us to do that, I think. Um, just wanna be left alone, y'all. If, uh, my dad's gonna get letters, everybody else deserves to get a damn letter. And there's some people, you know, I'm not pointing no favors, but they know they are. They have not got a letter, is that right, Drew?
I don't know who's talking to you.
I'm service center, corner here, right, right in town. Anybody?
You've got plenty of letters.
I was calling out, I was calling out.
Oh, yeah.
I was calling out.
No, but this day the truth.
Well, I mean, that's a mystery, from what I see, man, like, have anybody go to jail. So is it something to worry about? Hell, I, I should say, right, y'all, it's a nuisance to me that y'all think that I'm a nuisance. That's a nuisance to me. I'm poor, I don't know about that thing, y'all. I'm, and that's how I choose to live. Um, I don't need the headache with money. I don't need that problem. I just, if anyone today, they gonna do it to hell, I'm all family. Or I'm gonna make it important to come to every board meeting and kill, something's done about other people. I wish they never received one of these letters, y'all. Y'all don't have time for this. Hell, a cop's brought it to me. Crime must be done since I quit raising hell like this, ain't that? I mean, it's, it's, it's nonsense. They got better security measures than we were male. They don't wear a male badge, they wear a police badge for a reason. They're not male men and women. They're served, served to our country, to our community. And this is just, it's shameful, that there's nothing else better to do out here than worry about a stick in somebody's front yard. Slag down a lawnmower, play hell, bring it in here, tell them to put a tire at my house, I don't give a damn. At the end of the day, I don't care, y'all. I just wanna be left alone, my family, left alone. I'm gonna start picking like people out here picking, I don't like picking. I just wanna be left alone. I'm sure if Leonard's getting letters, he must be left alone too, but he sits on board, so.
That ain't got nothing to do with it.
It's a hell with it, right? I don't wanna say the hell with it. I believe you keep the yard nice and clean, y'all. I'm not saying I'm gonna open up a dump, and I'm gonna open up a junkyard the next letter I get, and it's gonna be terrible. I got more junk than y'all know about. Y'all ain't seen all my shit. I have a bunch. I keep it out of sight, much of it, I have a scrap metal pile, with that cement, wood pile, a couple dollars on some chickens, which are in cages. And I'm about to probably open up a chicken house and slag down, I have a hunk for it. It needs to be tore down, from what I've been told by a couple of people that work for this town. I'll put a chicken house in it, some hogs, and hell, listen, from all over, come out here, try to yawn. Because I don't diss them long since, y'all. And that's about all I have to say. I don't think no, no more cops coming to my house for a damn mail call. That's, that's sad. At the end of the day, it's sad. They don't get paid to deliver mail, they get paid to be cops. Pretty sure the delivery mail ain't their big job, y'all, so don't send another one to my house, don't have Eric seeing one, y'all let Eric know, don't see one. And if I call them, see one, damn, now I don't call them often. I don't like to in any way, but I just don't need this a nuisance in my life. My, my parents are bad health, they're all this hell, and y'all know, y'all know who they are. And they're a bad health. And the people that I've grown up around, they're giving them a little age on it. They're not the best health either. And the damn sticks, all y'all got to worry about, y'all got problems and all my brothers. Because there's cars sitting around every day, whereas I look without tags, without, we're not registered to be said, there's a long, they got their home, they're on. My dad can't park a lawnmower in Slade now, put the hood off for it for a month? Come on, y'all. Don't do that. Y'all have a good day, be safe going home, God bless you, I love all y'all.
Okay, Miss S.
Hello. So I need to talk about Honeymoon Monday. I know it's early, but I started in January, and we have a huge problem with Honeymoon Monday this year. It's on a Friday, the home game with Virginia High. There's no way possible that we can have six thousand people in town with a home game going on, so.
Mr. Potts will change it to Thursday night for you, since Halloween's on Friday night.
We won't.
He can change it.
Can we do that?
I think he will.
President's cap, I think you should change it.
They, uh, officiating got so tight, they didn't move a lot of games to Thursday night last year.
Well, we talked about that when we looked up the schedule, but we were worried that we couldn't hang our hats on it possibly getting changed because we didn't have rates, so.
Let me make a call for you, yeah?
That would be awesome, because I make Friday still a change. But the only problem is, is there other, I didn't look to see if any other schools in the county had a home game either, do you know? Because I don't want to impede on anybody else's home game too, because, I mean, it's happening, everybody's gonna be tricking, they're coming out here, and then we'll have, you know what I'm saying? I don't give a shit, just do it. Because the whole county tends, you know, not to slate this show.
Yeah, let's, let's take one step at a time, Mary. I've called him.
I start stressing because I'm already booked, so.
Oh, yeah, you should, ah.
I didn't know.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
All right.
Fix it for me.
Oh, yeah, fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can ask for more stuff. I did have one announcement. And we're gonna be doing another dinner and show on May sixteenth, or it's a comedy show this time, and I'm trying to work it out where Eric does something after a show too, so dinner at my place in the show, and then we're gonna have something at air.
At air.
At the Wila.
At the Wila?
Yeah. And we're working on some ownership too, but I'll bring it later when we finalize it, so, that's, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Nancy.
Y'all have a lovely night.
Should pass for a break.
I'm there.
Oh, and we need a dark side.
Listen, girl.
Hey, mate.
Sir.
Come on in here.
It's a big, it's a big-
Pretty good.
It's good.
Pretty good, there you are.
I'm trying to get home, so I'll stick to the notes. Uh, good evening, councilmembers, my name is, for those of you who don't know me, Nathan Ballenberger. Uh, I'm the owner and head instructor at the Japan Karate of Lebanon. Newly established martial arts dojo, serving the people of our community since November of twenty twenty-four. In partnership with the League of Wrestling, with Dylan Smith of the Pressing Hospital Program. Our mission is to help students' volumes build strength, physically, mentally, and emotionally. Through traditional karate instruction rooted in respect, discipline, confidence, and personal growth. I founded this school to honor my late instructor Howard, who I met during the time of Virginia Air Mall College. He told me to test for promotion after one semester, and after that, I was pretty much hooked. But for me, at the time, it wasn't about the training. Mr. Smith gave me direction, leadership, and a second family outside of home, being away from home. He passed the torch to me, just as the elders passed it to him, across many generations of this lifetime. Mentorship taught me that if you have the ability to make something better, you also have responsibility to try. That belief is why I'm here today. We currently work with eleven students ranging in age ranges from four years old to adults, and we're growing every week. Many families are turning to martial arts to help their children overcome anxiety, build confidence, and develop emotional resilience. One of our students, by the name of Bo Cook, is a powerful example of this. He joined us struggling deeply with anxiety, hated group play, and cried nearly every class. But with consistent encouragement and guidance, Bo now stands on the mat, has made friends, and is thriving. His mother tears up when she sees how far he's come. We teach students that self-defense is a last resort. Group karate, they learn how to avoid confrontation, stay calm under pressure, and carry themselves with confidence. These are lifelong skills that reduce violence, build character, and empower kids to face life's difficulties. We are proud to be a new small business at Destin Lebanon, releasing space locally at the distance in heating and cooling, and began in partnership with Mr. Smith, and supporting nearby services and offering something family-friendly positive for residents. As we grow, we hope to host regional karate tournaments and seminars throughout the year in Lebanon. We then settle bringing visitors, benefit local hotels and restaurants, and highlight our town along the way. Our current needs to expand our programs and assure student safety, we are in urgent need of formats, basic protective equipment, and construction essentials. These are for proper instruction, safe learning for the environment. We are respectfully asking for any information available, grants, community support programs, whether for small businesses, youth development, or health and wellness that could help us meet these needs. We would also greatly appreciate the town's help in spreading the word about our program. Specifically, maybe featuring the events or sign-up days in the town's social media pages, displaying upcoming karate events on the town hall digital signs, partnering with the town annual youth wellness or anti-bullying initiatives at the high schools, um, and closing our vision is to make this business, the Japan Karate Dome, more than just a business. We want it to be a space of mentorship, transformation, and community ability. With your support, we can grow into a long-term resource for the youth and families of Lebanon. A place for children to be orgained leaders, adults can find purpose and values with respect, responsibility, and courage that are lived out every day. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, David. There's some places that you could probably need to talk to, BC does, uh, the grants at your top level, and maybe with, uh, you know, IDA, we've got the, the ten, was it five, ten thousand, seven, five hundred dollars rate. So I need you, if you would, leave your contact number, we'll just stay in there, so we, I can get up with you.
Absolutely. Appreciate y'all.
I'll see ya.
Howard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, man.
Have a great day.
Good to see you.
See y'all.
How long's your report? I don't know, let's give him, give him a, uh-
You got three minutes.
You give him a three.
You give him a three, so every day we get.
I'm proud, but not, I thought, what's that say, let him, give him a more Jesse, let Jesse, yeah, that's what Drew does. Let's give Jesse. I'll be fast.
Go, Jesse, go.
Let's go. We got that shooting around.
We've, we've got that we learned too, but.
I first wanted to apologize that you get me and all Eric tonight, he was busy, uh, doing some hiring and doing a little program. And when he tell you, he was sorry. A lot of hard acts to follow here, and I, I hope I can send him justice. In terms of total, uh, the police department has hauled over a total of sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-one miles. That's a, that's a whole lot of miles, and I promise you, there was a lot of those spent on Cleveland Road. Our total summons, wanted, wanted tickets and cases, one hundred and thirty-eight, showing nineteen total traffic summons, seventy-six wanted tickets, forty-three criminal cases. Uh, we've had thirteen misdemeanor arrests, five felony arrests, four load vehicle crashes, two of those were reportable and two of those were not. Had a DUI arrest, fourteen motorists assist, eight hundred and twelve total costs for service, uh, and our total fuel usage was two hundred and eighty-two point three gallons. I think those are pretty good numbers. Uh, let's break down our cases by officer back there on the back page. Uh, I think everybody was, was anywhere from one to seven criminal cases, and anywhere from two to thirty-three sun edition. Uh, our special detective Matt Heard, he had a good month, uh, and we used record services a total of four times, two of those were under request and two of those were not. There's also, uh, a page in back of my packet, there was a, uh, estimate for a, uh, it's, it's basically for a new camera system, for the camera that protects our monument here in town. Looks like the total was three hundred and ninety dollars. Any questions I can answer for you?
Spend like three hundred dollars for it.
All right. For, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew, that camera's, is that, now it's saving already?
I was, I was personally hearing that.
Could be then, it's-
It wasn't missing.
It was, it was through to that.
It's been there for several years, and, and I still got them included, y'all, so.
I don't want them to- I was just like, we just put a new one up there back when we had all this protests. Kind of like those digital radios, just keep me with that.
Oh, thank you guys, by the way. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
I actually have a pretty short report this month. Uh, first item on here is the AEP streetlight quote. I know we were, uh, Rex and Nelson were interested in possible base three from the town hall for the DMV. Uh, him quarter has forgotten the scope of work, end quotes, for that at two fifty-five, three sixty-two. And this would be all holes, and we did, we tried looking both sides, this would be all holes on the left-hand side of the road, so remember, there would be no holes on the right-hand side. But it would get the three lock holes that are there right now removed, so there'd be no overhead wires, and all the wooden poles would be removed on that, uh, in front of DMV and the Presbyterian Church. That's the information, if anybody had any other questions.
Could you include that in our, uh, we have our budget workshop, include that?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you.
Drew, those streetlights, those, uh, that would also be approved under the urban maintenance grant.
We'll see why not the first two places where, so.
I, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I didn't have time to go back and look at it. Uh, a sidewalk project we did with the, that's on Technology Park Drive, was that, was that in agreement with urban maintenance, or was that general fund?
That was, uh, savings, capital savings, the first payment, that one thirty-one, that we had to pay, had to pay three payments. The one thirty-one, we just did a capital savings, and I'm gonna work it in the budget for the next two payments.
Which budget?
The next, it's coming up, ten budgets.
Ten, not urban maintenance?
No, ten.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
It wasn't in this year's budget, and the payment was due since when, capital savings.
What I was going with that was, was I don't wanna get too much on urban maintenance.
Right, yeah, that's new construction.
So that's, so that's new.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to verify, this is new construction too, but.
Right.
Qualified.
Qualified.
I just wanted to make sure that that sidewalk, we weren't gonna be double dipping into the urban maintenance.
No, that is, I said, first payment, I think it was a, a one thirty-one, some change it was, and it came out of capital savings, because it didn't budget it for this year, but we're planning on adding it into the next two town budgets, general budget.
And they kind of caught our hand quickly.
Yeah. And that construction too, uh, I mean, it's a slow, it's a slow project, that's construction to twenty twenty-eight, to the prime, for that project, so. Um, any other questions on that? Uh, the next question I have, or I guess I have a business with Little League ball field here. We've got a agreement that takes back, I think it's seven years, that was, what, eight years? Uh, for basically, basically Little League to have first count priority of our ball field. Uh, it was done, I think, with Lee and Horn and Mike Duke, those ones on there, uh, it expires this month. So I guess we need to point some ideas, if you wanna renew that, if you wanna change it, if you just want it to be a good faith agreement, uh, however.
It comes up in a month.
Came up two days ago.
I think it's something our town manager drew up that wasn't necessary prior. I think we've got a great relationship with the Lebanon Little League. Obviously, the president of the Little League sits on our board. You know, totally, personally, I'm totally committed to Little League utilizing that field during their season, whatever's in the best interest of the kids at the Little League. But I don't think, I don't think it's necessary to renew the agreement, specifically the agreement as is, because it, you know, calls for, pretty much Little League should be responsible for certain things that we don't even hold them responsible for. I think that we continue to support Little League and the material, if we have games on our field, you know, we can, uh, we can survive those. That's just my thought on it.
I was just wondering, Brad, could we just do a, just a more simple agreement? You'd pop that out if you need it, for priority purposes, I mean, not near as comprehensive, just.
Memorandum. Memorandum of understanding. I think the previous one, I would agree with Scott, I think you had.
It left a lot of Little League play, you don't have time for it.
I think you had a lot in there that was suggested, but the simpler the better. And then we have a great relationship, but the main verbiage to me was that the Little League has priority from X to X, and I mean, that, that's good verbiage that we have.
Well, I want Scott, we didn't even know we had it, I mean, we, I do remember having, we didn't even know we had it, and there's not been any problems, so I don't see any reason that-
We haven't had any issues, it's just.
I think Shane, Shane on the clarification at one point, and I don't, I think, well, we, we didn't take any action within our council, uh, meetings.
Yeah.
Um, but I think it was pretty obvious with the council, we did, we did discuss it, and, you know, from what I remember, that, that the Little League would have the rights to the field.
I might see one drafted up to approve, there's quite a bit of that to be left out, because I think it said the town would provide all the markings before games, and the Little League takes care of all that. Um, I mean, we just work together, it's a good partnership, so just if you could draft something, clean it up a little bit, I'll be glad to help you. I apologize, I didn't send you a copy.
Sorry. The, the one concern I would have about eight years, the one concern I would have, Brad, is, which I guess as long as you, you could always get out of it, if you, either party can get out of it if they need to, within a short notice, I, I would say thirty days or a memorandum of understanding.
Memorandum of understanding, all right, that's.
But, but the concern I had is eight years, we don't even know what, we don't even know if there will be Little League in eight years. I mean, the, uh, the concern I have is that, you know, I'm really proud of the numbers that the Little League has this year, but you don't know year to year what those numbers may be, or what they may be eight years from now. So that was, you know, the term of it, I think, was a little, little much as well.
Yeah, three, five, it's a good one.
I, I, I would just do a memorandum of understanding and, and that's it.
Not put a year or a year.
I wouldn't put a year on it.
Oh, okay.
And then the bobbing. The economy's always bobbing, things could change, I wouldn't put a, a year on it. And I wouldn't put a number on it, I just, we're there to support each other.
Yeah, as I said, you know, you, it's just, it's an agreement until it's not a agreement, so.
Well, and, and Little League's been good about, hey, if we don't need the field, uh, you know, when we don't need it, they let our parks and rec department know, and, you know, depending on their numbers and their, uh, you know, their facilities, what, what they can use, and, you know, they've been really good on working with us when they need it, when they don't need it, so.
Okay, are we good?
You're good.
Solid.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, just got a couple of head things on projects, we started the lighting project debate, they put in three footers, dug the holes and put those in, we'll be here again tomorrow.
How tall are those lights?
Eight feet and a half.
They are large.
Sixteen, I think?
I was sixty.
Sixty, I think.
That's pretty tall.
What are you, three times?
That's just something to put in there.
I think as, the wall is complete, it's pickball court, with the weather coming up, I'm expecting, uh, the cover guys probably be here this week or next week, they're gonna come last week if it's too cold, it's gotta be.
Looks like you're gonna have temperatures this week?
Yeah, it's gotta be, I think, sixty above for three straight days, uh, for that stuff to heal.
If they have a, if they have a lapse in time and you can meet with them, you take them east to the park.
Check the temperature's up, I can have Shane, cause I'll be, let's, so here Thursday, I'll be back.
So sixty degrees, above sixty for three nights straight?
Just sixty degrees for three, in, in the, within the sixties for three days, clear, you know, at nighttime, they can drop below sixty, yeah. Last week was one. The theater is almost done, the hood inside of that, before the last bit of concrete this week for the curb gutter, they'll be able to finish up the landscape. Uh, and then budgets, revenue's done on the budget side of that, I should have a draft budget by the end of this week, uh, so we're just working on that. Just an update right now, where we're at as of March, end of March, uh, for this year's budget, we're at sixty-eight percent of expected revenue and seventy-one percent of expected expenditures, so.
True, isn't that hard?
Yes, and that's also at sixty-eight, doesn't include final draft of the state script. Any questions?
What about farmers' market?
Uh, so I'm gonna get to those today, we got a little bit busy with some phone calls, so I'll get to interview those tomorrow.
Is it open the next month, the end of the month?
May third.
May third?
May third. How many applicants do you have?
We got three that everyone called.
Four?
Yeah, four applicants, three interviews.
Okay, gotcha.
Drew, can we get some more quotes for the technology package for the, uh, council room? I know that was outrageous.
Yeah, it was, it was up there.
Maybe simplify, simplify.
I've got them, I told them to rent it back as much as possible, uh, and then the only other one, when I tried doing it before, it was best buy, and they do it by Zoom, they don't even come in.
What about the, the musics, do they not do any?
Shane, I can share with him.
And what about Scotty Boyd, even though he does security, it might be something he can do for us.
Who, who was the one that did?
Forty-five.
We got a quote from Durkland.
Forty-two, gee, you run it up. Forty-two thousand. Aaron did it, Aaron was the one, Rob Donnie was here, Aaron.
No, I saw Donnie on that.
Aaron likes those, those. I think you can write it in a little bit, but I still don't think we're gonna get to.
I mean, what is, what?
I'm gonna do some projectors on each side, make presentations, and enable the ability to video stream.
And that's it?
So what, that didn't include the microphones or nothing?
That's a push-to-talk microphone.
Okay.
But every, the bigger, hardest part about this room, is everything's, everything's gotta be wireless. That's usually, that's, some stuff, I'm gonna put a rack back here, I'll take the wireless stuff for you guys, but as far as on the walls and that sort of thing, everything's wireless.
We'll just continue to kick it on that road a little bit.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to Scotty and talk, see what we can figure out. Any other questions?
Yes. Fields Avenue, new water lines, is that a project we can put on the books, now that it, I know that they're.
We'll, we'll get, uh, the land yard started on the hydraulics on it, and then Gay Avenue will be the first one, but we can follow that up with Fields.
And that was, um, that goes back to our P E R's distribution side, that was one of the recommendations that were we, one of our problem areas.
And we have fixed some of that area, so it won't be quite as bad as, as what the P E R was, but, uh, I think, I feel Gay Street's worse, it needs to be a priority over Fields right now.
Did you mention to me, or did I imagine, that the, the border fence with the, um, in between the pickleball court, are we gonna paint that as well, all the way down behind the pool? And if not, can we get something that's better?
We are going to get the actual fillers, fence fillers, actually slide out instead of the tarp, and we're gonna get black, and take that tarp off that's out there and have black all.
Okay. Don't fit.
It doesn't, but we in Knoxville, we're gonna get the, the things that used to fix basketball court.
Could I make a suggestion? Could we paint the fence like we did at the fire department prior, if we get o- okay from the property owners?
For sure, yeah.
Cause I think it'd look bad if you have.
Chain link and white.
Yeah, with rusty chain link and. And then to, I'd like to make a motion to get out the stage sound and lighting, uh, for twenty, for twenty twenty-six. I know that, uh, Mr. Higgins has made some, uh, inquiries about performing that for the town. I know that Melissa had used a different vendor as well, uh, and I know that we use SRO, and they've been really good, uh, you know, to work with. But there is some local folks that are interested in providing that service, so I'd like to make a motion that we get quotes, for stage sound and lighting for next year.
Are you including the obtaining the entertainment with that?
No.
You better do that.
So what you're saying is, if we don't know what that's our.
Well, we can still work with Ken on that, I think, can't we, Mayor?
Well, I think he, I think it's, right now, it's been a package, I mean, he's doing the, and Donnie mentioned to me, that he's wanting to do.
He's probably guaranteeing the sound for his, his contract.
You see, the, well, I mean, the, the entertainers all have different needs, that's what Scott, I agree with what Scott's saying, but Donnie had mentioned to me, also wanting to do the, uh, what do you call it, bookie.
Let's look at it both ways then, Mayor, how about that? Is that fair, how puts that in my motion to look at with and without entertainment as well?
Further discussion?
Is it for all events, not just?
Well, just for, just for what we use.
See the fest July fourth.
Beach party.
Beach party. I guess you need to vote on today. We get a motion to second, in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those. Anything else for Mr. Shaw?
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Drew. Okay, at this time, any motion going to executive session? Under personnel, prospective business, and legal. Your second?
My second.
Section code two, point two dash thirty-seven, eight, or eleven, A.
Out of one.
One.
Seven. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those say aye.